Give me a thumbs up. All right, thank you everyone for joining us this evening for the District of Brown Deer School Board Meeting. This October 12th, 2021. My name is Dr. Todd Beedle and I've called this meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Verification of a public notice, meeting has been publicly noticed. Verification of a quorum, we have all seven board members in attendance. Approval of the agenda, would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Dr. Beedle, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
All right, thank you very much, Ms. Zeig. All right, motion has been made, do we have a second?
Dr. Beedle, I have a second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashley, motion has been moved to seconded, any discussion? Hearing and seeing, not all in favor with raise hand and or aye? All right, most carries nationally 7-2-0. And let's go to our mission statement. Together with our families and community, we will inspire students to be passionate learners, creative thinkers and innovative leaders who enrich our world. All right, let's go to our business office and facilities report. Business office update, Mr. Klemic.
Good evening, board members. I have a memo that I prepared for you that is out on Board Book. First item we were going to discuss is the 2021-22 enrollment. And I provided a chart for you to show you what our actual third Friday count came in at. Again, we were unsure of what kind of response we would have in this second year of the experience. And wanted to be very cautious in our estimates and we weren't, we were expecting flat enrollment. After we had been down the year before, but as you can see, the differences between our September actual and our, between those two years, we've actually gained 151 students this year, and that's in the classroom. So you can see how it shifts, quite a bit of it ended up in the, in the high school. Especially the freshman and sophomore classes are considerably larger. But we did get a bump as well in kindergarten. And in 4K, which is always good to have the younger kids start their, their academic careers here in Brown Deer. So, and these numbers again do include, we had, I believe we had 80, 81 open enrollment seats originally planned to have, or be open when the, when we opened up the, the seats, we actually lost a couple of students and we didn't fill all of the seats that we had intended on. So we have 72 students right now that are open and rolling from other districts. We have a couple of students on tuition waiver, five students with special circumstances. And these numbers also include our 14 students who are actually attending the Keel Virtual School. So we are, we are again looking at staffing just to make sure that we haven't exceeded some of the levels in some of our classroom, or some of our classrooms, so we're continuing to look at that and see how it goes. And again, the registration process is also, you know, especially here in Brown Deer is almost a year round process. So we still do get families coming in, so I would say that number is probably even a little higher than it was. But this is the number that we use for our revenue limit calculation as part of the third Friday count. So were there any questions regarding the count at all? All right, well then moving on, I wanted to just provide a short update on the budget. As you recall, I'm, we're working through the, the final stages of the 21-22 budget. I will have a completed document for you at the end of the month, once we get all of our information. But there's been a lot of good news that we've been able to experience thus far. With our increase in enrollment that we just talked about, we are now looking at our membership FTE. It's over 1700, but then that includes our open enrollment out students as well. And we subtract our open enrollment students and there's a calculation that's involved. And we are, we also prorate 4K kids and summer school is paraded a certain way. So when you take all those numbers, it's not, the, the calculation is important, but when you take all those numbers together, our new three-year rolling average will be 1,666, which is up 29 from what I had originally budgeted, which means that we will not be experiencing the declining enrollment or hold harmless exemptions. We're actually going to have more revenue authority than we did the previous year. We've also have some additional information coming in with our prior year open enrollment numbers. These are students that we should have counted last year, but didn't for whatever reason. Usually it's late identification from the resident district and we don't find out until later in the year. So they, the DPI just provides you an opportunity to, to capture the revenue for those students as well. So as you can see from, from top to bottom of this chart, we're basically looking at, it's a slight increase from last year's budget, but a significant increase from what I had intended at the annual meeting. So we're looking at about just over $21 million of revenue limit authority. Just kind of scrolling down the memo, oh, the one piece of course that is still, will still be determined on the revenue side is our voucher exemption. This is the amount that based on the number of students that we have living in Brown Deer that are going to attend private schools through the statewide choice program. We'll get that number on Friday and we'll know the, that the, the cost of all of those students. And that's generally something that then is, you know, the tax levy is increased to cover those costs and then it would, it's just a wash. But, but what that number is, whether the student, the number of students went up or down, I didn't, I did budget a small increase. And so right now I still have that at $475,000, but that'll be adjusted on Friday when we know the final number. We did mention that open enrollment out number has also gone down. So it really actually worked to our advantage in a normal year, if the open enrollment would have dropped as much as it would have, as it did, which is almost 50 students, which is great. It just means that we have more resident kids attending Brown Deer. And the, the students who are, who are living here are coming to Brown Deer as opposed to going to other districts. But because we did have that increase as well in our resident count, it kind of offset each other to some extent. So we were able to again, not see a drop in the revenue limit authority this year. But we went from 227 open enrollment out students last year to 180 this year. And that allowed me to reduce that open enrollment out expense by about $400,000. So you're seeing our revenue is going up budgetarily about $400,000. And our expenses are going down $400,000. So we're looking at a significant opportunity where I, one of the questions I had in the budget when we originally passed it was, how much of S3 would we need to tap into to just keep our budget going? It's looking like it will be relatively, a relatively small amount. I had a $600,000 originally in there. We're still fine tuning some of the pieces of the budget, but I would expect that the S3 dollar amounts will, will stay relatively small and we'll be able to save those for future years. And then the final question that everybody is interested in is what does the property tax levy look like? And again, the, the main piece that we're waiting for on that, which will come Friday is the number of our, the amount of our state equalization aid. And again, the voucher, voucher number is also part of that equation as well. So as of now, I did do a calculation just showing you where we're looking in the limited revenue tax levy chart that I provided. You can see that the levy did go up a little bit right now from where I had projected with the annual meeting, but it's still lower than last year. And that's at 8.9 million dollars, almost $9 million. But then if you look in total, looking at all of our tax levies in the following chart, we're looking at approximately $12 million for the tax levy with a mill rate of 1145, which would be a $1.13 less than the previous year. And again, the mill rate, you would take that number, multiply it by a thousand dollars for every, for the value in your home. So if you have a $200,000 house, you multiply the 1145 by 200 and that's what would be your tax bill for the school district. So there are a couple of questions that I just, in case any board member wanted to, to express an opinion on. One of the things that we're going to, we're going to make some final decisions over the next week and a half, just to decide on these last pieces of the levy. That, that have some, we have some opportunity to decide what we want to do with it. You can see that it is, it is going to decrease. The question would be how much does the, you know, will the board want to do it? So one of the things we, we have talked about previously as a potential is we have, in the past, we have the authority to increase the referendum debt levy to really whatever you want, if you want to prepay some debt. If you, if we have a year where the tax levy is going to drop significantly, you can offset that and, and, and take some of the money and apply it to prepaying debt, which saves interest costs long term. Last year we did that to the tune of $400,000. When we get the final number, it may be something that we want to talk about next week and it might be an adjustment. And I'll certainly share that with you in a memo if that is something, or if, if the board is committed to returning any potential levy decrease back to the taxpayers, that's certainly an option as well. And again, the other part, we're still trying to figure out internally, especially for our after-school programming, how much of that will be funded through the Fund 80, the, the community service tax levy? And how much will be done through S3 funding? So I had, I had originally budgeted a $200,000 levy. It's possible and probably very likely will reduce that a little bit. That won't have a significant increase or impact on the levy, but it will, it would reduce it slightly. And then the entire, again, this entire process will be culminated on October 26th, when I can present to you all the final information with the budget and the tax levy. I will let you know early next week what the, the final state aid numbers are, so you can just kind of get a sense of what that is. But hopefully by the end of next week, or I'm hoping before Saturday, we'll have, I'll have the budget document for you to peruse over the weekend so that we can, you'll be ready to go on Tuesday to do the final approval. Anybody have any questions about the, the budget update? So in general, really good news, it's, it looks like we will be reducing the tax levy. We can still invest in all of our, in our students and our programs that we're trying to do. And we'll probably be able to save some S3 funding for the, the next two years as opposed to using up more of it than we anticipated in this first year.
Board members, questions for Mr. Klemic in relationship to this? Excellent, excellent, excellent report that we have from our financial standpoint right now. Any questions for Kevin? All right, thank you, Mr. Klemic.
Okay, then this is the last couple items I did mention. We, we did complete our cash flow borrow last week, so we do have the million dollars that we borrowed for cash flow purposes in our bank account. I just wanted to mention from a food service standpoint, this happened yesterday. Linda Mandoli, who has been the district's food service director from Airmark. You've seen her a couple of times when she's presented to the board along with Molly, who is our, who's the director that oversees our region. She retired, it was kind of short notice, a couple of weeks notice where she just decided to enjoy her retirement. So I just wanted to say publicly, I know she's not on the call tonight, but we're very appreciative of Linda's work throughout the time in the district. She's been a great asset and a resource. And obviously this entire time she's been here, it's been a challenge because we've had, we had open reopening schools after a construction project and then a pandemic started. And, and she was also dealing with staffing issues and other things we, when we were partnering or we were supplying food service for Eastbrook Academy, which we no longer do. So that was a little more of a taxing time for her. So, so we do, we do appreciate all of her work and, and she will be missed. Airmark has identified a candidate that the business office will be meeting in the, in the near future. And then hopefully we'll be able to bring them forward and introduce them to the board as well. So we're looking for that. And then finally, I wanted to say just a brief message on transportation. I don't know if we have any parents on the call tonight who are here, but I know that it is, it continues to be a extreme challenge for us as a, as a school district to, to operate and provide busing. We, we are working with our, with our partner Go Right Way, but they have been extremely challenged with, continuing to be challenged with driver shortages and service disruptions. We've had a delay in getting the Here Comes the Bus parent app in place. I do think there are some changes that are happening at Right Way and I am anticipating the opportunity to kind of do a reset and hopefully we'll get some improved service. I, I plan on meeting with the staff on Thursday. So we're going to try to get some of the issues that we have had as a district ironed out and, and able to move forward. So I do appreciate the family's patience, know that, you know, we are kind of, we're in the same situation you are where we're, we're reacting when we're told that bus drivers aren't available, routes are delayed, routes have to be canceled, routes have to be blended together. And we are trying to do our best to make sure that our families and students are serviced as best as possible. So we are, we are working diligently to, to work with them. And again, this is not a situation unique to Go Right Way. This is across the, across the area, it's across the, the country. School bus transportation companies are not having a great start to the school year. And so we, we know we don't have a lot of alternatives other than to work with our, with our partner to try to figure out how we can be as effective and support them as much as possible so that we can provide great service to our families. Because I know that every time there is a disruption and parents aren't able to be confident that the bus is going to pick up their child at the time they, that they expect, or that they're not being dropped off at the time they expect. It, it, it messes with their own personal schedules and personal lives and, and we do apologize for that. We are trying to minimize that as much as possible. And so we are going to be really pushing really hard with, with Right Way to make sure that we can find ways to minimize those processes and those disruptions in the future. I am hopeful that the Here Comes the Bus app, I'll be able to announce something relatively shortly, that it will be up and running. And then hopefully at least if there are disruptions in service, parents will at least be able to have that information early enough to make a decision on whether or not they want to drop their kids off on their own. So again, I, I, on behalf of the district, I certainly apologize for all the inconvenience that has occurred. And just know that we are not sitting idly by trying to let it happen. We are trying to work and, and minimize that as much as possible. And if there are no other questions, that is the end of my business office update.
All right, anyone have any other questions for, for Mr. Klemic from his business office update? All right, thank you very much, Mr. Klemic. Please keep us notified in relationship to the whole thing with the transportation and Here Comes the Bus app and, and kind of exactly where we're at. So that the way our parents are able to be able to watch kind of what's going on with, with, with the buses and coming in and picking children up in a timely manner. All right, thank you very much. Let's go on to our next item, which is our building and grounds.
Good evening, board members and community members and staff members. So one of, again, one of the great things about providing weekly updates to you is that you are learning about what we're working on real time. So I won't go into too much detail because you receive the update every week. For any community members, it is all in my board memo. So if you are interested in more detail, you can certainly take a look at the memo. But a couple of things that I just wanted to point out is that we did have some plumbing issues if, at the elementary school. And what happens is we, we flush wipes or baby wipes or flushable wipes. And neither are really good for your plumbing system and they, they tend to clog up the system. And so we've had to have it snaked a couple of times to clear some pretty stubborn blockages in that system. But since then, we have not experienced any more issues that we, that we were previously experiencing. So that was one big thing that we have had to troubleshoot and get to the bottom of in the past month. The second thing is that I just want to bring to everyone's attention is that unlike last year, this year we have school five days a week. And so scheduling vendors is a little bit more of a challenge. And so usually what we did previous to last year is we scheduled them on our professional development days. And this year is no different, but because we only have a couple of opportunities, usually just one, October is different because we have parent teacher conferences. But on those days, it is very busy. So we usually have five or six different vendors in our buildings making repairs and this past month was no different. So we had, we had an expansion joint that was behind the LRC in the middle high school that was beginning to fail. And so I subcontracted CG Schmidt to come in and, and make that repair. However, the expansion joint that they brought, they didn't realize that it was not going to be wide enough. And so they'll have to come back and finish up that repair. But most of the repairs thankfully were pretty minor over the past month. And I anticipate that being the same for the month of October. I can answer any questions that any board members may have at this time.
Board members, any, any questions for Ms. Smyska? All right, hearing and seeing, excellent job, your team have always done a wonderful job and being able to keep our grounds facilities, buildings up to par. So thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
All right, let's go on next to our item number three, Engage Learners. And that is Mr. Garrison.
Yes, good evening. Sure, good evening, on board members. Tonight, Mrs. Leah Bishop, our pupil services coordinator, and I will give you a very brief overview of our Keel platform partnership. As you can remember, back in June, we started this conversation with Keel. And in July, I believe we approved the partnership as a school district. I'd like to first thank all of the parents, whoever participating on the platform for their patience and engagement with our students in this process. With that being said, I would like to exactly, actually turn it over to Mrs. Bishop. And she'll take us through a very brief presentation of our Keel partnership platform. And some of the information tonight is always changing. And so Mr. Bishop will definitely let you know some of those updates. So, Mrs. Bishop.
Awesome, thank you, good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Leah Bishop and I'm the pupil services coordinator for the school district of Brown Deer. Currently, we have 15 students now enrolled in Keel Virtual School. As far as a progress update, 64% of students are on pace in all of their courses. Now, it should be noted that this percentage can vary based off of one or two assignments. And so actually, even since this presentation was submitted, I did get a notice today from Keel that this percentage has actually increased to 73% of all students on pace in all courses. In regards to future concerns, transitioning to the platform can be a challenge. The fact that the platform is asynchronous and then also time management. And then in regards to celebrations, there are weekly progress reports and updates being given out, both from Keel and then myself to parents and students. Parents have also provided us with positive feedback just in regarding the communication piece. They're happy with the communication that has been given out on a weekly basis. And then teachers from Keel Virtual are offering to do one-on-one meetings with students who might need some additional support. I also attached here the mission statement for Keel Virtual Schools and this again comes from Keel E-School. So again, they really work to foster and nurture, nurture personal growth through self-awareness, individual responsibility, healthy risk-taking in order to increase academic achievement. I also included students enrolled by grade. So as you can see, we currently have two students who are a part of our Keel Virtual Schools program in kindergarten. One student who is in first grade, one in third, one in fourth, one in fifth, one in sixth, one in eighth. Two students who are enrolled in ninth, one in 10th, one in 11th. And then we have three students who are currently seniors. In regards to collaboration, I am continuing to collaborate with all of the school counselors at all levels. School counselors have sent Keel the appropriate course selections for students at the high school level based on graduation requirements. And then final grades will be posted through Skyward and the grading scale will continue to align with the school district of Brown Deer's grading policy. We also have monthly partnership meetings with Keel, so they do host monthly meetings with coaches. During this time, Keel is able to meet with local contacts, administration and district coaches. Monthly updates are provided as well as times to address questions or concerns that need to be addressed. And then during the coaching meetings, Keel also assists with walking through the platform just to ensure that the coaches are comfortable with utilizing the platform. And then last but not least, enrollment possibilities. So currently there are seats at most grades available. Right now, we just received an update that grades three through five are our capacity limits. So once this happens, students are placed on a waitlist. And then if there is a seat that opens up, Keel will reach out to us and notify us. So at this time, that is my update. And if there are any additional questions, I am happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, board members, do we have any questions in relationship to our Keel virtual learning from Miss Bishop? Oh, hearing and seeing, excellent job, thank you very much for that update, Miss Bishop.
Thank you.
All right. Is our COVID-19 update.
And that would be me, Dr. Beedle. Thank you very much. Good evening, board members, community and parents. Thank you for joining us this evening. This presentation will be brief as we continue to navigate the, the experience here in the school district of Brown Deer. Just wanted to bring one, well, first let me say, I want the community to know and understand our COVID task force meets weekly. And so that includes Ms. Smyska, our Buildings and Grounds Director, Ms. Farrington, our district nurse, myself, Mr. Griffin from the elementary school and also Mrs. Otten Dari, Director of Pupil Services. So we meet weekly to understand how we and reflect on what has transpired weekly in our school district to know and understand if there are any opportunities for us to either pivot, enhance what we're doing or do something different. Wanted to bring to your attention, the COVID dashboard is, is live and is on our district website. So anyone who was interested in understanding what positive cases are looking like in our district-wide, you would go to the district tab on our website and you see the last heading at the bottom. Noted COVID-19 dashboard will bring you the information regarding current information as it relates to positive cases in our school district by building. What I'd like to share with you also, you can scroll down here. So note the, the chart at the bottom to share with you our positive COVID cases in our district. At the elementary school, we have five, at the middle school, one, and at the high school, two, for a total of eight based on October 12th, 2021. So we ask the community to avail yourselves to this information throughout any time of, it is a, we update it daily. And so we ask that you please avail yourself to the information so that you can better understand what positive cases are looking like in our school district. In addition to the addition to the COVID task force, meaning the update on the website, just also wanted to share with our community, as we've been in school approximately 27, 28 days. And as a result, district-wide, the number of positive cases from the first day of school until now is a total of 45. We have had 20 positive cases at the elementary school, nine at the middle school and 16 at the high school, for a total of 45 in the 27 days that we've been in school. And so if you do the math, math, we're looking at approximately 1.6 positive cases per day across the, across the district for the number of days we've been in school. I want to assure the community that we will continue to monitor our cases on a daily basis and know and understand when we are aware of confirmed cases, we are responding accordingly in terms of notifying our staff as well as our parents of the need to quarantine, post contacts and notifying our parents in that to help us make the decision as it relates to sending students to school while keeping everyone safe and healthy. So one of the messages that I do want to convey to the entire community is, or to everyone is, if we know, if you know your students or children are symptomatic, please do not send them to school, whether you believe it is COVID related or not. The space that we're currently navigating is the uncertainty of really knowing, but we're navigating the certainty of trying to keep, of making our, a good faith effort to keep everyone safe and healthy. So that is an update regarding, regarding our COVID-19 task force. And we continue to navigate again this space weekly and will adjust accordingly when necessary to be responsive to, to this pandemic. Are there any questions?
All right, this is for Dr. Kelsey Brown, Ms. Robinson?
I have a couple of questions, just one thing in terms of where the dashboard is located. It doesn't seem very intuitive. It took me a little bit trying to click through the site to figure out where it was. So it may be helpful either to have a link like on the homepage where people can see or maybe have a link under the back to school tab as well could be helpful if it was out there with that information.
Okay.
The other question I have as well is in terms of when those cases, I know we have the entire protocol in terms of notifying parents and such. What's the process for notifying teachers when cases are noted?
The process at the moment is the district nurse and Ms. Smyska and the principal. One of the three individuals are, we're asking them to go directly to the teacher to notify them of the case that has transpired in their classroom. Because what we know for sure is, one, we know our teachers want our kids in school, but we also know our teachers also have questions they would like for us to respond to as a result of understanding a particular case. So we're making a good faith effort to get to the classroom and notify, share the information with the teacher in person. Does that always happen? And not, not always, but we do make a good faith effort given our, the human, the human capital that we have working in this space.
Do we also notify the teachers if one of the students in their classroom has, is not symptomatic, but has been quarantined for close contact?
Yes, they are made aware of that as well. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, that is the COVID-19 update, Dr. Beedle.
All right, thank you very much, Dr. Kelsey Brown. All right, let's go on now to our engaged innovative staff, approval of new hires, Mr. Klemic.
Yes, we have one new hire this evening. Yes, we have one new hire this evening. Michelle Miller, uh, will be a elementary school classroom teacher.
All right. Would someone like to be able to make a motion to approve the hiring of Michelle Miller as a third grade teacher?
Dr. Beetle, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Michelle Miller as a third grade elementary school teacher for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year.
Thank you very much. The motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Dr. Beetle, I'll second.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Nick. All right. Most of the main second. Any discussion? All right. Hearing and seeing that all in favor with raise hand and/or eye? All right. Most carries nationally seven to zero. We welcome Ms., uh, Michelle Miller as a third grade teacher to the Brown Deer family. We're expecting great things from you, uh, Ms. Miller, and we look forward to you coming on board and, and working with our children and educate them at the highest levels possible. All right. Let's go on to our next item is item B, our approval of resignations. Mr. Klemick?
Yes, we have two resignations for the board to approve tonight. Um, Natira Crawford, an elementary school teacher and Lakita Terrell, an elementary school teacher. I would ask that both of these be approved pending the receipt of liquidated damages.
All right. Uh, would someone like to be able to make a motion, uh, for the resignations?
Um, Dr. Beetle, this is Anita. Um, do you want me to do them together or separately?
Uh, I think we have to, I think we have to do them separately. Cause they're, they're different dates, right?
Okay. Dr. Beetle, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Natira Crawford as an elementary school teacher effective October fifteenth, twenty twenty-one, pending receipt of liquidated damages.
All right. A motion has been made. Uh, do we have a second?
Dr. Beetle, I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ashley. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing that all in favor with raise hand and/or eye? All right. Most carries nationally seven to zero for the resignation of Ms. Crawford. And our next is for Ms., uh, Laquita Terrell.
Dr. Beetle, I'd also like to make a motion to approve the resignation of Laquita Terrell as an elementary school teacher effective October eighth, twenty twenty-one, pending receipt of liquidated damages.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms., uh, Ms. Peter, Ms. Anita. All right. Uh, we, motion has been made. Do we have a second?
Dr. Beetle, I'll second.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Zick. Our motion has been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Hearing and seeing that all in favor with raise hand and/or eye? All right. Most carries nationally seven to zero. We wish Ms. Crawford and Ms. Terrell, uh, much success in their further, uh, endeavors and careers. And as we always said, once a falcon, always a falcon. And, uh, we wish them well. All right. Let's go on to item number five, engage board and community to lead. Uh, I would, would like to report that our joint meeting with the village of Brown Deer, uh, that was scheduled for October twentieth, twenty twenty-one at five P M has been, um, has been canceled. Uh, we will be having that meeting rescheduled again for December. Date and time to be determined. Uh, but again, it will be happening again in December and we have to cancel the meeting for the October twentieth, twenty twenty-one meeting at five P M and we will, um, let the community know when we will be having that meeting rescheduled for December with that date and time to be determined. All right. Wow. Love this agenda. All right. Uh, with, with that being said, we are at item number six now. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Dr. Beetle, this is Lisa. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Ms. Alinsky has made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Dr. Beetle, this is Anita. I'll second.
Thank you very much, Ms. Peter. So the motion has been made and seconded. Uh, all in favor with raise hand and/or eye? All right. Most carries nationally seven to zero. I call this meeting, uh, adjourned at six thirty-nine P M. Thank you very much, everyone, for giving us this time out of your busy Tuesday evenings to share what's going on with the, uh, village of Brown, the school district of Brown Deer. Thank you so much. God bless. Stay safe and we will see you soon. Good night.